Open the zoning board of appeals of the town of Pleasant Valley, call the meeting to order and if we could stand to salute the flag. For the leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. For those of you in audience that don't know the protocol, this meeting is in two parts. The first part is a public hearing. Anyone that wishes to comment on the application is welcome to do so. Everything is put into the record as testimony, so therefore everyone gets sworn in. The second half of the meeting is for deliberations, although the public is welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. We don't take any comments at that time. I would like to disclose just before we start that I worked for the family of one of the neighbors that are listed on the addresses that were sent notices, so I just want to disclose that so that it's out there and it doesn't. I don't think it'll have any effect at all on the application, but I'd just like to put that out there. Okay, I am in recent notification of neighbors. See that soon as I start to talk. The public hearing notification that was in the papers and authorization from the owner for Mr. Peter Close to represent him. At this time, we call Mr. Close. Is it, are you, are you Mr. Close?
I am.
Hi, okay. If you would come up and tell the board why you're here.
Sure. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Peter Close.
Oh, yes.
My name is Peter Close. I represent the applicant here from an appeal of the zoning board of appeal of the building inspector's interpretation. Actually, two interpretations of the zoning code. The first one was in March of 2024, which declared that there was a commercial operation being operated at 23 Applegate Way. And the second in May of 2024, which revised that opinion and included the definition of lodging accommodations, describing the house at 23 Applegate as a lodging facility. Now, the genesis of this appeal is that in our opinion, since the town of Pleasant Valley has no short-term rental law, that you cannot force various definitions of lodging facility or commercial operations upon what is actually a single-family dwelling. I think the evidence that was adduced in the record that you have before you tonight shows you that my client purchased 23 Applegate Way as a single-family dwelling, took out a mortgage as a single-family dwelling, uses the property as a single-family dwelling, and I would actually like my client to testify on the record that that's as to the use of that property. Mr. Black, can you come here?
Would you state your name, sir?
David Blatt.
And Mr. Black, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of Maryland.
Understood.
So can you describe for the board your purchase and the purpose of the use of this house?
Yes, I purchased the home in March. Yeah, I purchased the home in March of 2022 as a single-family dwelling with my family and my wife, Carter.
And in fact, how do you use that premises?
We use it as a second home and we also rent the property short-term.
Okay. Prior to your purchase of that property, did you do any investigation of the property?
Yes.
What did you do in specifically?
Specifically, we did multiple inspections of the home, walked through the home. We contacted the town before we purchased the property and went into the building, the building department, and spoke with a representative of the town about our purchase of the property, using it as a second home and as a vacation rental.
As part of, as part of the purchase of that property, did you receive a report from the town relative to the condition of that property?
Yes.
And has that been marked in the, in the record as Blatt Exhibit 6, page 60?
Yes.
And what, can you describe for the jury what the, oh, for the jury, sorry. I just finished a trial. For the board, what that particular inspection was?
This is a report from, from the building department specifying that a certificate of occupancy had been issued and what the current use of the property was.
And at the time, were there any violations against the property?
No.
And you purchased the house knowing that this, this report existed?
Yes.
Okay. At some point after that time, did you learn that the building department took a different view of how the house is being used?
Yes.
When was that?
Within the last few months.
Okay, and what happened?
They issued a, we received a notice, a cease and desist notice.
Okay. And that's what precipitated the appeal to the, to this board?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I've also tonight given you an email from Mr. Blatt. I received it today. I'm sorry, it wasn't in the packet. I got it today. Confirming the freedom of information request that they served on the town prior to them purchasing this property as a single-family home. They I'm going to rest mostly on the written record that I've given to you with respect to my revised appeal that I filed last week. But I want to raise a couple of highlights for the interpretation of what a single-family dwelling is and, and how it is not a commercial operation under the terms of the code and how it is not a lodging facility under the terms of the code. You see, this board is charged with the obligation of interpreting very strictly what your code says. And I, I understand that the building department believes it's one thing, but if it's not specifically that thing, you cannot make it up. You cannot use your own, you cannot use terms that are not in the law itself. It's what we call strictly construe. You must strictly construe the definitions in your code with respect to this particular house and this particular, it's a dwelling. One of the, one of the arguments I made in, in my letter to you was that under our constitution, you can, everybody has a right to contract. And that right to contract includes leasing out your property. It's a property right. And Mr. Blatt and his family have been renting this out on Airbnb. Indeed, the, the link that is in the cease and desist letter says you cannot rent it out on Airbnb. That being said, there are also 12 other homes in the town of Pleasant Valley, all of which are renting out on Airbnb, but only Mr. Blatt has been subject, subject to this interpretation. I, I sent out a recent FOIL request and the only documents out there is a list of Airbnb residences that are in the town. But again, we're the only one before this board seeking a determination under your code that this is a dwelling and not a lodging facility. One of the, one part of the lodging facility definition is that it is rented out for tourist accommodations. Again, as I said in my, my written letter to you, there is no written accommodation, there's no tourist accommodations defined by your code. So you cannot use any portion of your code to define what is occurring at this Airbnb. And that, the reason that's important is because when you're trying to interpret the code or when anybody in the general public is trying to interpret the code, you must, you must rely on the words of that code. What I'm, what I'm driving at, I guess, is that if you're trying to divine a, a, a definition of what a lodging facility is, you could go to another section of the code, which I did not mention in my letter, and that is what your code requires for, required off-street parking places. If you look at lodging facilities in 98-4202, you'll see that a lodging facility is one guest room plus one per every two employees. So it's clear that your own code, the point is that your own code is looking at lodging facilities as commercial entities like, like Airbnb. I mean, that's not like an Airbnb, like a, like a bed and breakfast or a hotel or a motel, which your code specifically says a dwelling is not. Okay? So the point is that because there's no definition that says short-term rentals are outlawed or not allowed, you cannot interpret the code against what's happening at this particular place. The other portion of this appeal has to do with the town's denial of a building permit for this single-family house. As I've said in my letter, if the, the use of the home is as a dwelling, you, and it's in compliance with your code as it exists today, not as, as in some future definition of what a short-term rental might be, then the, the building permit for the pool should be permitted and, and issued by the building department. In this case, the building department has held up issuance of the building permit because they, in their, in their estimation, this is a commercial establishment or lodging facility, neither of which it is. We are not here today to discuss the use of the property other than the definitions, okay? We're not here to hear from neighbors about alleged buses driving on the, on the parking lot. We're not here to hear about objections of use of the property as a short-term rental because that is not the purpose of this appeal. The purpose of this appeal is to interpret your own code to decide whether this use is permitted as a dwelling, not whether some neighbors object to it. The last portion, the last thing I would like to, I want to object to, and just for the record, is that as part of your code, you're requiring the placement of escrow for purposes of an interpretation of the code. Now, in land use applications, that's a common practice where you have to hire an engineer or a water expert or some kind of other stormwater expert to describe what's happening on land. In this situation, we're looking for an interpretation. It's, it's one citizen's right to have, to come to this board to have an interpretation of what your own law is. There should be no reason to have to pay outside consultants to interpret your law. Your job, it's your job to interpret the law all by yourselves, not, not with extra consultants, et cetera. And that, that notion is essentially set forth in your own code in 98-91 B, letter I, which says, "Notwithstanding the provisions of subsections A through H above, no escrow shall be required for any application to the zoning board of appeals unless the zoning board of appeals has determined the subject application will require a consultant review. If such a determination is made by the zoning board at this time prior to final approval of any application before it, then the provisions of subsection A through H above all shall be fully applicable as if, as if they've been required upon submission of the initial application." So it's my point here that there's been no prior, no prior finding that a consultant fee for an interpretation has been required. And so I would object to the fact that we have to pay consulting fees or attorney's fees relative to this interpretation because this is a citizen's right to have an appeal by the zoning board. The last portion of this, I guess, is that I'd like you to, you know, I, I submitted the full entire response by the town to the FOIL request mostly for the, for the purpose of showing you that this house has always been and how it continues to be used as a single-family dwelling. The fact that Mr. Blatt uses it as a second home should be, should be important to you, making a determination that this is a dwelling. It's not a tourist accommodation. It's not a commercial facility, even though it's being rented out on a, on a short-term basis. Just like you could rent out your house for a year, a month, or a day. It's all, it's all the same. And I ask you that you would reverse the, the building department's determinations, both in the March and the May interpretations, and find that this is a dwelling and should, should be used accordingly. I've cited you the, the case law and the definitions, and I ask you to strictly construe those, those definitions against the town, even though you live here, to find that short-term rentals, and this short-term rental in this case is, is permissible given the fact that it's a dwelling and not a commercial operation. Do you have any questions?
We can go around the board. Ron, do you have any questions?
The, you said the, the client or applicant took out a mortgage on the house?
Yes.
You gotta talk into this microphone.
Yes, he took out a mortgage.
Okay. And, and who owns the mortgage? It's a, who, in what names the mortgage taken out in?
In the names of three people, two people? Two individuals.
Okay. So how, how does that match with the Rhinebrook Estate LLC? How does that fit together?
Who's the Rhinebrook Estate LLC?
It's listed in the letters here.
I don't know who that is. Do you know who Rhinebrook Estate is?
No.
No.
Did you just say no?
No, he does not know. My, my client does not know either.
I'll pass for now until I find it. It's in here. I'll find it.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I would question the applicant and saying that it is a resident and a second family home. How often do you reside here, if I may ask?
We try to use it as, we live in the city and we try to use it as much as we can, two to four times a month if we can. One to four.
And, and do you not have, do you have a professional manager there for the other times?
Yeah, we have someone who helps us with the maintenance of the house, yes.
And is that someone is paid?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's the only question I would have for the applicant. Counsel, if you would say, you mentioned that there are 12 other BMBs in the county, or in town, excuse me.
Yes.
What is the zoning of those BMBs?
There, there's a list in, at page, let's see. If you look at page Blatt 74, there's a list of the, this was supplied by the town. A list of Pleasant Valley Airbnb's that have, the first one is in RA, the second one is in LDR, the third one is in RA, LDR, RR, RR, LDR, RA, RR, 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 and RR. But the, the building department has been using for purposes of this appeal, the table of uses. And if you look at RA and RR, there's no difference in the table of uses between this alleged lodging facility. You know, lodging facilities are, are prohibited in both RR and RA. I don't know about LDR because I was not focused on that.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Sure.
Just, just a question to get back on Blatt 0021, on the indemnity statement that's requested by the owner. You identify Rhinebrook Estates LLC.
0021?
0021.
That's, that's a document from the town. That's a, that's a town. This, this document came from the town. I don't know who it is. In other words, we, we sent a FOIL request in and this is part of the prosecution, the prosecution, the response by, or the support that came from the building department. They're saying that, I don't, I don't really know who Rhinebrook Estates is.
It appears, if you go online and look for an Airbnb in Hyde Park, Rhinebrook Estates comes up and the hot picture of the dwelling comes up, big, long contract of what you can and can't do. And it also states that you can have the house totally to yourself. It's very private. No one else lives there and no one else will be there. That's, that's a contract that you have to sign to rent out his house.
Even if it's, that's true, ma'am, I, I would say that
Well, it's true.
No, no, no.
You can pull it off the internet.
No, even if it's, even if that was, even if this place was owned by a corporation, it doesn't change the fact that it's being used as a single-family dwelling. The point is that your code says single-family dwelling and that's what this is being used as. I understand that this property, and you can see it in, in the FOIL request and the FOIL responses, that in 2017, 2018, this house was split into three separate apartments and there was a big problem with the prior owner because it was not being used as a single-family dwelling. It was being used as three, three units plus borders. In this situation, it's a single-family home with being rented out or used by the owner.
So whose name is on the deed?
My client's.
Just the one name?
Yeah. No, no, there's five names. There's five.
No, there's three. Five, there's three.
Three names. Three names.
And how, how is the house insured? What classification of insurance?
I, I don't know, I don't have that. But, but if you look at the deed, the deed was supplied by the, by a letter that I've received this afternoon. But again, you know, I'm gonna say the same thing. You know, the, the use, the, the code, the, what we're talking about today is the use of the house as a single-family home. Whether it's owned by a corporation, or the king of Prussia, it doesn't matter. The point is that when you're interpreting the code, the use of the house as a single-family dwelling is what, what is important, not as a lodging facility or as a commercial thing. You can't, you can't use the definitions of your code to define what's happening here. And that's the point, because when you have, when you're interpreting a zoning code, you have to strictly construe that code against the town. I, I'm not saying that you can't pass a, a short-term rental law that says, if you're gonna rent your house out as a short-term rental, you, you have to register. Redhook did it, okay? You, 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 you register, you file insurance, you do whatever it is, you know, whatever it is that, that the, that the town board says is important, you follow those rules, you register your, your short-term rental, or you don't. You know, some, some towns have said that you have to be owner-occupied. That's not, your, your code does not say anything like that. Your code says, and, and he was, it was confirmed by Mr. Blatt and his family members, prior to purchasing this with the town, that this, that there are no regulations against short-term rentals in this town. And that's true, it's still true. If you, if you pass a law that says there's no short-term rentals, that's fine. But we're, we're complying right now.
Could I get a legal definition of LLC? Is that considered a business agreement?
So, I think, we didn't really introduce ourselves, but...
Oh.
I'm Emily Spencer, I'm attorney to the town, and I'm here tonight to advise the ZBA, so that Mr. Nelson can stay in the role of representing and advising the code enforcement officer. So, I'll take that question for you. Your question is whether an LLC is a business entity?
What is it, what's the legal, what's the legal definition of an LLC?
It's a limited liability company.
And, and is it a requirement in order to run a business?
There are multiple ways of, of registering your business. It, it is, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Well, I was just wondering, is it, is it, is a business classified as a commercial?
Um, so you really need to apply the definitions in the code. So, look at which definition in the code fits the use that's happening at this location.
Okay.
I know I'm not directly answering your question, but that's, that's really the job that the ZBA has.
I have a question popped into my head. We're looking at the code, the Pleasant Valley Town Code, that, that calls this a dwelling, correct? A building designed or used exclusively as living quarters for one or more families. The term shall not be deemed to include motel, hotel, boarding, or tourist accommodations.
Right.
You are saying that they are using this for short-term rentals, correct?
Yes.
Short-term rentals for people staying overnight, accommodations staying overnight, et cetera, that kind of thing, right?
Yes.
Staying overnight?
Yes.
You are not, is there any other use that this house is being rented for?
No.
Mr. Blatt, is there any other use this house is being rented for?
'Cause it's advertised for parties, events, meetings, productions, pop-up, forty people maximum, it's on Splacer.
I have it right here.
Okay, but, but my, my point is that the definitions that are in your code don't fit what's happening here.
So, does that fit in as a definition of a dwelling? Using it for pop-ups, filming, productions, meetings? Because I thought you just said that this is only being used as a combination for overnight. Am I wrong on that?
I, I'm unaware of it. No, I'm not wrong on it, according to my client.
Okay, so...
But, but again, if you were gonna specifically say that, that there was, what we're here from the bottom of what exactly is occurring there, right? If, if we had a special permit application, if we, if we needed to show up and say, "We need to have a special permit application to do a party," or a, or a wedding, or, or something like that, then, then that would be, that would be a question for the planning board or the town board, I'm not even sure which, under, under your code. What we're talking about here is whether Mr. Blatt bought this as a single-family house, and is using it as a single-family house, but rents it out on a daily basis, on, you know, on a weekend-by-weekend basis.
Anyone else have any questions? Anyone have a question for Mr. Blatt?
No, I just wanna ask, you talk about the lodging facility definition, what are you using for that definition?
I'm using your code provision ninety-eight dash, what is it, three or something?
If anyone wants, I made a few copies of the definition of dwelling and lodging facilities, since that's...
I sent it after then today.
Okay, great. The paper copy.
Ninety-one, yeah, so you, you have a, a list of definitions in your code?
Right.
Um, that go through like what a dwelling is, and what a lodging facility is?
When I, when I read the lodging facility definition that I have, I'm not sure why you don't think that fits how the property's being used.
Go ahead and read it.
Says, "Any hotel, motel, inn, or other establishment, other than a bed and breakfast, providing sleeping accommodations for transient guests with or without a dining room or restaurant."
Okay, so, so that is the, the opposite of what a dwelling is. The dwelling says it's...
I'm asking about lodging facility, you're contesting both definitions, you're saying we should apply both definitions here?
No, I'm saying that the only definition that applies in this situation is a dwelling, because...
Well, I'm asking you, why, why do you not think that lodging facility applies?
Because there's no establishment in your, there's no establishment in your code? So, if you go to the...
No, I'm saying this lodging facility, right? And then in the, you have the chart of what's permitted use and what's not permitted, there's a category called lodging facility, and it says you, you can't use that particular property in an RA for a lodging facility. I'm wondering why you don't think the way the property's being used qualifies as a lodging facility?
Because a lodging facility is a, a commercial activity where...
It doesn't say that.
It says, it says, it says that you have to have, it has to be an establishment, it has to have a parking requirement with employees, it has to have...
I don't see, I don't see any of that in this one definition that I just read to you.
That's my point. The point is that, that, that this is a dwelling, when it says, the dwelling says that they're living in it, right? And then, then it, the, the condition, or the definition continues in your own code that says, "It is not a bed and breakfast, a hotel, or, or tourist accommodation, or lodging facility," right? If you go to the prior definition...
You're saying dwelling?
Yeah, it's a dwelling.
I'm not asking about dwelling, I'm asking about lo, why you do not think the property qualifies by definition in accordance with this lodging facility definition in our code?
Because, because what a dwelling is, it excludes...
I'm asking about dwelling.
No, but look at the, the second part of the dwelling definition.
I've looked at it, I've looked at it before to the meeting, I know what it says. I'm looking at how the property's being used, and I read the, the definition for lodging facility, and I say, "Well, that looks to me like that's how this property's being used." It's being used as a rental, transient guest, it's not a permanent thing.
There's no definition of transient in your code?
Well, transient means short-term.
No, well, okay, so...
If you look up the definition dictionary, it means short-term.
Sure, sure, but there's no definition of establishment either, and there's no, and that's the point. The point here is, until you have a clear definition of what's being regulated, you can't, you can't interpret it in, in favor of the zoning board. I mean, you can't interpret it in favor of the town, because it's not clearly defined as not, not doing it. In this situation, you have a dwelling, the dwelling says, the second part of the definition of dwelling says it's not a lodging facility. So, they're internally inconsistent.
Okay, I, I looked up business in our code. Business general, an establishment primarily engaged in selling goods and/or services to the general public. This includes establishments such as movie theaters, banks, financial institutions, and health and fitness clubs. Then underneath that is business recreational. A business which for compensation offers recreational services, including but not limited to country club, clubs, batting cages, et cetera. That is closer to what he's doing. He is, he is renting it out for recreation for compensation.
But that's not the, what the zoning, that's not what your building department said. Your building, building department says that it's a commercial operation. There is no definition of commercial operation. We have to stay to the definitions in the interpretation. We're not talking about the, the business terms you just read, because that's not what the building, what's not, where, where we're appealing from. We can't go off, off-topic, because when you're interpreting a zoning code, it has to be narrowly construed against the town. I understand, it's frustrating. I understand that, you know, it, it looks like something, but it, that's not the purpose of the zoning code. If the zoning code says you can't do something, it has to say you can't do it. In this situation...
I agree.
Yeah.
I agree, you shouldn't be doing it.
No, there's nothing in the code that's, no, according to the building department here, it's not a commercial operation, because there's no definition of a commercial operation here, okay? And it's not a lodging facility, because it's a dwelling. And if you look at the definition of dwelling, it says it's not a lodging facility. So, the point is that if you're going to pass a rule that, that stops what's happening here, then it has to be done by the legislature, not by the building department and not by this board. The purpose of the zoning board is to relieve th, these kinds of anomalies in the code.
Anything other than using that building, that dwelling, as a single-family home is prohibited in that zone. And he doesn't, you don't really live there, right?
He lives there, he testified that he comes once to four times a month. As a second-family home.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
There were, there were two letters, right, in, in the packet? One was written in March and one in May?
Right.
And the one in May either corrected or changed the one in March to, to not call it...
Commercial.
A commercial, but changed it to a lodging facility. So, I don't think we need to address the, the commercial aspect of this if we, if, if the zoning administrator changed it from that to a lodging facility.
No, there's two different, there was two different interpretations, one by the building department, by the, I think the zoning code enforcement officer, and one by the zoning administrator.
I thought earlier, someone was reading something and said that we either rescind or change the previous letter to, to not be a commercial, a commercial business.
Yeah.
But use a, instead use it, use the term lodging facility.
All right, here's one. This one is, um, this is James Lampert, and this is dated, this is a really terrible copy. This looks like the May one, can't really see it. Uh, here's the cease and desist, this is May third of two thousand and four. And this is that you are running a commercial business in the RA zone.
But they defined it as lodging facility there.
No, on this one.
Yeah, read the whole, read the whole, the first, that first paragraph in the May third letter.
Please be advised, this is to David Black, Carter Black, Lawrence Zabark, twenty-three Applegate Lane. It says Pleasant Valley, but it's High Park. Please be advised that you are running a commercial business in rural agriculture zoning at twenty-three Applegate Lane, Pleasant Valley, that should be High Park. This activity violates chapter ninety-eight, attachment one, schedule of permitted uses, which does not allow lodging facilities in RA zoning districts. And then there was a copy of the schedule, and what's allowed and what isn't.
Right. Yeah, so that's, that's the one where it adds the lodging facility as the definition. That's the second letter. So, it's got both in there still, in my view. But, that's why we're here, that's why we're here on a revised appeal.
All right, so this must be the first one. Okay, please be advised that you are running an illegal commercial business in RA twenty-three Applegate Lane. Please cease and desist, we have complaints regarding a commercial operation being run at this property. The complaints range from excessive vehicles to late-night disturbances. Also signed, James Lampert.
The second one was, um, the building code enforcement. But anyway, yeah, so...
Does anyone else have anything?
Yeah, a question, are we or are we not calling this a B and B?
It's not a B and B.
It's not a B and B?
No.
So, when you're advertising Airbnb...
That's just where they found the listing for this particular operation, you know, that, you know, he's, he's leasing it from a platform. It's no different, I, I sent a bunch of, I, I attached a bunch of cases to the, to the interpretation, and showing where, back in the day, before the internet, you had vacation rentals, and some municipalities didn't want to have vacation rentals. And so, they would issue similar letters to what occurred here, and they would then, you know, prosecute the homeowner for operating a short, a short, a vacation rental, what they were called then. Now, as the internet has emerged and we have the sharing economy, you have Airbnb, which is a sharing economy, which essentially is a vacation rental in, you know, being advertised on the internet. And the fact that it's on the internet, I mean, it's, it's like a newspaper, like you can, you can, you could put up a short-term rental. What, is a one-week short-term rental permitted? Is one-month a short-term rental permitted? Your town code doesn't say that, and that's the point here. The point here is that there's nothing prohibiting what's happening here in your code. Until there is, he should be permitted to do it, and that's why we've applied appeal to your determination of that.
So, you're saying, even though it advertises on Airbnb, it's not a B and B?
John?
Microphone, John?
I apologize for that. So, you're saying that even though it advert, you advertise on Airbnb, you are not a bed and breakfast?
No, because there's a, there's a definition in your code for bed and breakfast, and your, your, your code enforcement officer didn't believe it was a bed and breakfast either.
Yeah, the, the definition calls for no more than five bedrooms.
We're not, we're not operating on Airbnb.
Okay. So, would that mean you'd retract the advertisement scheme and go to a different type of format?
I, Airbnb is, Airbnb is just a way of, of advertising a way to, as a vacation rental, you know?
Yeah, but it's, it's more specific in the code, though.
What's more specific?
The, the words B, Airbnb, with regards to regulations.
Sure, and if, and if, if the occupant was there providing breakfast and accommodations, then they would have to comply with that, that section of the rule, or, or rule. But that's not what's happening here. What's happening here is a single-family home is being rented to other single-family people for a day, three days, a week, a month, whatever. And that, that's what a dwelling is.
I understand it, but, but you're advertising it as an Airbnb. So, so would you re-identify it when you advertise now? Because that's misleading to somebody, because it implies that it's a B and B, where you would have someone on site and you would have services for those individuals.
I think Airbnb...
No, no.
I'm sorry, could I say something? Um, Airbnb is just a platform.
Yeah, understand that.
Like VIVO or, or anything like that.
But it's a definition in the code, too.
Well, bed and breakfast is, but Airbnb is, is a company that's, you know, just allows people to advertise. So, that's, that's very confusing.
They probably could have, you probably could have found the listing on VRBN, or whatever, VRBO. The, the point is just, is the same.
I just don't want...
No, I understand.
...to get hung up on the B and B thing.
Appreciate it.
It's a vi, it's a violation. I mean, if I'm gonna sell you a horse and I advertise in a dog section, really? I mean, they're advertising in a B and B.
That's just a platform, everybody...
It's like, it's like a newspaper, you know, it's no, no different than a newspaper.
So, it's really a short-term, uh, housing, I guess, that's basically what it is, that's what you're asking.
Yes, that's my, that's my point, yes.
Have, have they not had, like bridal parties there and such?
Even if you do, it's still, it's still being used as a single-family home. It's not, it's not, it's not, let's, let's go back. It's not renting out one room to one person, one room to another person, and that would require different parking, that would have all sorts of different requirements. It doesn't have three units chopped up like the prior, prior, you know? It's, it's one house being rented to one group of people, one day. The definition of a family, you know, that's, that's, that's what I'm saying. If you're gonna have, pass an Airbnb law by the town board, then you could define it any way you want. Right now, what's happening is this is a dwelling being rented out on a daily basis, or weekly or weekend basis.
Okay, anyone else?
So, just the- Not being run as a business. They haven't bought the house with the intention of renting it out, and then, you know, when you do something like that, if you have rental property, um, you can, you get tax breaks, you can, you can deduct your expenses, that kind of thing. And then if you get from the income, do you have to declare their income for that?
I'm sure, yeah, in fact, in, in order to register in Dutchess County for Airbnb, you have to pay taxes to Dutchess County. And they actually did that registration.
Who about, taxes on what?
Taxes on the income that you make from the Airbnb, from the, from the rental of that. So, instead, because, so Dutchess County has said that all short-term rentals are subject to a, essentially, an occupancy tax, like, like a hotel, right? So, so they have to fill out an application and they have to pay taxes to, or Airbnb actually pays the taxes to the county. Um, Mr. Black obviously takes whatever's left over from Airbnb as, as income, yes. But that's just like any, any landlord would.
Well, who pays the taxes, then?
Airbnb is paying the tax, I believe.
Not any of the individual owners?
No, I don't, do you, do you pay individual taxes? Yeah, Airbnb just collects everything and then takes its piece, takes that piece, takes this piece, and gives what's left over to the homeowner.
Is there any income tax paid out of that?
Of course. Yeah, just like if you were renting out your house, yep.
And are you allowed to, because it sounds like you're running it as a business, are you allowed to deduct depreciation and that kind of thing on the, on the property?
I, that's a, that's a personal decision by the taxpayer, I would think.
It's what?
That's a personal decision by the taxpayer, but doesn't, doesn't really inform your decision here. Because this is, this is the, the purpose, the point of this is that it's a dwelling. You know, if I rented out my house for a year, I would have to pay taxes on it. You know, I deduct, I would deduct my, my personal real estate taxes and my, you know, take it off the, you know, off the income, because you have expenses for running the house. And with an eight-bedroom house, it's gonna be expensive to run. So, you have expenses that you're gonna, you're gonna offset against any, any income you have. But that's not the point. The point here is whether this is a dwelling, being, you, you know, earning some income, or whether it's a commercial operation, which it's not. And it's, it's not, also not under your code, a lodging facility, because it already says it's a dwelling.
And in your opinion, no matter what it's being rented for, makes no difference?
Pretty much, yeah. I mean, you know, I guess, I guess if you're gonna throw a 300-person wedding, you know, and, and that wedding violates some, some kind of code, I'm sure you have something to say about that. Or that, that the town enforcement officer or the neighbors would have something to say about that. But that's not what's happening here.
I'm still interested in what, how's it being listed by the insurance company?
I'm assuming it's in individual names, right? Because it's individually owned.
No, but how is it being listed? Is it being listed as a single-family or what?
Yeah.
I mean, to incur-
I, I don't have the document-
I mean, they've got a whole bunch of people coming in there. I would think that the insurance would be somewhat different than the insurance on my house, because I don't have a whole bunch of different people from all over the place. Is not, the insurance is not considered-
I think, I think that, that piece, what you're talking about, what you're concerned about, I think that would be covered by Airbnb. Airbnb has a policy that covers every person who rents on it. It's not the individual homeowner. The individual homeowner has a, a deed and a mortgage and a, and an insurance policy. The Airbnb, any Airbnb rentals that are rented out are covered by the Airbnb policy. But I, but that's, again, not relevant to this conversation. And that's why Airbnb is popular, because it makes it easy to rent out your house.
So, that's a commercial entity, Airbnb?
Airbnb is, yes.
So, you're being paid by a commercial entity?
I guess, I mean, you know, that's where the money comes through, but you're being paid by an individual homeowner, an individual person who's renting the house for a day. They happen to pay, they, they happen to pay for the privilege of finding it on Airbnb. But again, it's not covered by your code. So, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be enforced by the building department. If you want to pass the Airbnb law, go ahead.
Okay, are we ready to move on? Is there anyone else that would like to comment? Yes, Mr. Nelson? One moment, if you would, Mr.? Who's standing in the wings, Mr. Veder? Oh, go ahead, come on.
Gary Veder, Salt Point, Turnpike, Pleasant Valley. I do.
I'm sorry, what?
I do.
That's right.
I didn't bring a briefcase. I live in Salt Point, Turnpike, Pleasant Valley, I'm a model neighbor. Thank you. And I have a couple of questions. When this house was given its original permit, how many bedrooms did it have?
I believe it was seven.
It was, it was originally made with seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Originally.
I have read also the literature that's been sent out in advertisement form. I was wondering if alcoholic beverages would be served?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, if they are, that would require a separate permit. Swimming pool, we were informed that that doesn't make it a, a public pool. I would, I would question that. Uh, I think a pool that's open to the public living in a place might be, come under some health department regulations. Section 98, 4A. I'm not gonna get into a whole bunch of other definitions, et cetera, but I was actually part of the original zoning committee that, and we did surveys, and one of the top things that the people of Pleasant Valley wanted was to keep it rural. Part A says, quote, "To protect and preserve the rural and agricultural character of the town by encouraging development in appropriate locations and limiting development in areas that would negatively impact the town's historical rural pattern and scale of settlement." Thank you.
Wait a minute, Mr. Veder, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Veder? I guess not.
Good evening, thanks. Um, my name is Jim Nelson. Um, I'm here this evening to, uh, represent the, uh, building inspector and the zoning administrator of the town. Um, I would like to present to you some documents, uh, which I've gathered. You're gonna have a lot of documents and you're gonna have a lot of duplication of documents. But before I start going through the ones that I'd like you to pay attention to, uh, I'd, I'd like to give you copies of, of what I've got, which I have supplied to Mr. Close. And I may not have enough copies.
Thanks, sir.
Can you two share that? So, those two, the share?
Before going, uh, through the documents that are in that packet, labeled Applegate Drive, Town Documents 1 through 17, I, uh, wanna respectfully disagree, uh, with Mr. Close. I, I think we're both probably looking at the same core argument, but my take on it, um, and my client's take on it, is that the issue is the use. What is this building being used for? And, uh, I submit that it's not being used as a single-family dwelling. There's a code section we'll get to that has the definitions in. It is not being legally used as a lodging facility. Although, I submit that, uh, Mr. Fumo, um, and Mr. Lambert's determination that there was a commercial operation, a commercial operation was, um, a lodging facility, was correct. And the third thing is that I submit that is, uh, I agree with Mr. Close, that it's not a B and B, a bed and breakfast. And it's not a B and B because there are multiple requirements in the town to operate a B and B, which this facility does not meet. And in this zone, if you want to have a B and B, it has to be a B and B with not more than five bedrooms. So, uh, if I could, um, if, if you would take a look at, um, document number one in that, uh, packet. That's a copy of, uh, the parcel access, uh, for this property. And you can see on it that there's a, uh, tax number-
Is that, excuse me, is that like too close to you? We're getting some kind of feedback.
Nope, I'm checking, yeah.
Are you? Can you hear down there? Yeah. It's like some kind of- Oh, that may be better, thank you. Sorry.
Okay, sure. So, anyway, um, exhibit number one, submitted by the, the town administration, is parcel access showing, uh, tax lot number 905564. And Mr. Fumo's gonna, um, I believe, explain to you a bit later that that's in fact 23 Applegate Lane. If you go to, uh, document number two, uh, that is the, um, March 25th, 2024, initial cease and desist order, uh, which was issued by Mr. Lambert, the zoning administrator. And it refers to an illegal commercial business, close quotes, at 23 Applegate. Moving on, uh, then to, uh, document number three, um, this is a copy of Mr. Black's appeal from the first cease and desist order. It's an appeal from what Mr. Lambert wrote. Now, when, when Mr. Close submitted this, uh, or Mr. Black submitted this, uh, there was attached to it, and there is in your broader record, uh, a position letter from Mr. Close. And that position letter does, as he said, include cases. I didn't include more copies of them here because, quite frankly, you will have enough paper. And you, those documents will be before you. Number four, skip ahead a couple of pages, uh, is, uh, that's building inspector and code enforcement officer John Fumo's cease and desist. This is the second cease and desist. And this one is dated May 3rd, 2024. And this one, as was discussed earlier by Ms. Bamba with Mr. Close, uh, it does make reference to a commercial business, but it makes specific reference, uh, in the third line of the first paragraph to being a lodging facility. And it says, please cease and desist. From there, we move ahead to document number five, uh, which is, um, Mr. Black and his co-owner's revised appeal. Um, when, when Mr. Fumo, uh, issued his, um, cease and desist, um, the town, uh, and Mr. Close agreed to consolidate the appeals together. The appeals from both of the ceases, both of the cease and desists. So, they're both in front of you. And this document dated May 30 is Mr. Close, as, as the applicant's attorney, uh, the applicant's position paper on the consolidated appeals. Um, the next one is number six. And pardon me? Number six is a copy of, of Code Section 98- And 9811A. If you've got it. 9811A says, and I'm dropping some of the unnecessary words, but otherwise quoting, "No use shall be allowed except as provided by the following schedule." And then below that, in Sub B, it lists zoning districts. And the second zoning district is the rural agricultural district where this property is located. And then, at the bottom of the page, there's a key. And that key, because you do it, uh, you use to read the table of uses, which will be the next document we'll look at. And that key at C, uh, here on Document Six, Section 9811, says that if it shows up in the schedule of uses with a P, in that rural ag-zone, you can do it. If it says P with a star, it means you gotta get site plan approval if you want to do it. Uh, and just SP means you need a special use permit to do it. And then finally, uh, what I suggest is, is, is relevant here, particularly as to lodging facilities, is if there's a dash in the chart, which we'll look at, which I'll suggest you look at next, that says prohibited use. So, moving on to number seven. Which is a, a grid-
Right there, right there.
In number seven, and, and this is an attachment to the town's code. It's, it's part of the zoning code. And I, I have not made a copy of the entire zoning code for you, but, uh, I believe that you're free to refer to other parts of the code as you wish and to, to recognize them as controlling. So, up on top of that attachment one to the code, once again, it repeats the key about permitted, what type of permits are needed for certain uses, and the dash about prohibited uses. So, you'll see that a dwelling, a single-family dwelling, when you go across to the third column, to RA, rural agriculture, which is where this is, you can have a single-family dwelling there. No argument. If you go, however, to the third page, the third page of Document Seven, it says lodging facility, open parentheses, except bed and breakfast. And when you go over to RA, it's a dash. And that dash keys to not, not allowed. So, I, I do think that it's probably necessary to go a little bit deeper. And if you could flip ahead, please to document number eight. This is the code definition of a lodging facility. And again, I'm dropping out reference to hotels and things, but what it does say is any establishment other than a bed and breakfast providing accommodations for transient guests with or without a dining room or a restaurant. So, that's the code definition of a lodging facility, which is referred to in the chart of uses as not being an allowed use. If you go ahead, then, to document number nine, more definitions. If you go ahead then to document number nine, more definitions. And the definition that's checked there is bed and breakfast. A single-family dwelling, overnight accommodations, not more than five bedrooms, and breakfast provided must be the primary residence of the owner or proprietor. Moving on to number ten. The town does deal with the regulation of bed and breakfast. And in exhibit ten, which is a copy of ninety-eight twenty, it tells everyone what it takes to qualify as a bed and breakfast. And what it's gotta have, it's gotta be, is a single-family dwelling with overnight accommodations, not more than five bedrooms. Breakfast is to be provided. The accommodations are to be paid for, and it's gotta be a primary residence of the owner. Now, the applicant courteously acknowledged that this property is not a bed and breakfast. And I happen to agree with that because it doesn't fit the definition or the requirements. And the requirements for a bed and breakfast are at number eleven. No, they're not. Okay, so, ten is bed and breakfast, and it does have the requirements there, and it includes getting a special use permit. And it's gotta have a CO. And it has to have Department of Palat approval. And this property has none of those things, but again, the applicant acknowledges that it's not a bed and breakfast. If we went ahead then to number eleven, we're looking at, more at definitions, and there are two in particular. Dwelling, single-family, a building containing one dwelling unit. Okay? A dwelling unit is a building or a portion providing complete housekeeping facilities for one family. I need to refer to something in the code. Pardon me. The definite, yes, pardon me, I didn't forget that. Dwelling unit is a building or a portion thereof providing complete housekeeping facilities for one family. And I'll get to it in a second, but the town administration's position is that although this building may have one dwelling unit in it, it is not providing, as an allowed use, complete housekeeping facilities for one family. Because in order to meet the criteria for a dwelling, which is a dwelling unit, the use is limited to providing those facilities on a shared basis with a family. And if you go down on page ninety-eight, one fifty-two, I didn't check it, but it's down, it's the fourth up from the bottom. Family, one or more persons occupying premises, living together as a single housekeeping unit, using rooms and housekeeping facilities in common, a roomer, boarder, lodger, or occupant of supervised group quarters intended to house more than fourteen residents shall not be considered a member of a family. Next, number twelve, certificate of occupancy. The reason that's in here, because there are requirements for COs. And what twelve says is that no building shall be occupied or used until a CO has been issued stating that the proposed use complies with the provisions of this chapter. We'll get to the CO in this, but the CO in this is not for a housing or living facility. It's for a single-family home. And finally, Mr. Close made reference to the pool permit, and I did not copy it and bring it with me, but there is a section of the code, which I'd ask you to take notice of, which says that no action will be taken as to a property where there is, and I can't remember whether the phrase is violation or cease and desist order. But that's the basis for the town administration not issuing the pool permit in the interim. So those, those are the, most of the documents that I wanted you to see. But I would also ask your permission to ask John Fumo, the code enforcement officer, a couple of questions, if I might.
Sure. John, wanna come up? Do we have to swear him in?
Um, yes.
John, tell me yes. Mr. Fu...
Sure.
Yeah. Mr. Fumo, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth I hope you got?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the state of New York.
Okay, and Mr. Fumo, do you have a copy with you of the Applegate Drive documents that I passed out, or would you like another one?
I don't know. I'm starting from the beginning, right?
No. Fortunately, fortunately not. Mr. Fumo, can you tell us who you work for and what your title is?
I work for the Town of Pleasant Valley. I am the code enforcement officer, as well as the building and fire inspector, and I also run the department.
Am I correct that you've had a chance to work on the twenty-three Applegate Drive matter?
In the last two weeks, yeah.
Okay. If you would go back to the document packet in front and flip ahead three pages to the parcel access, which was document one. Can you tell the board where the property bounded in yellow is? What the address of it is?
Twenty-three Applegate Lane.
And does the, does the tax parcel number appear on that?
Yes.
Okay, can you just put that in the record, please? You cite it?
Yep.
Okay.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
Oh, we'll do it this way. Does exhibit one show the tax parcel number for twenty-three Applegate Lane, three nine oh five five six four?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that what I would call an assessor's card or cards?
Yes.
And can you identify the house which is pictured in that on the first page?
Yes.
Can you tell us what it is?
That's twenty-three Applegate.
And over on the right-hand side, in the upper right, it says property class.
Two forty.
What is a two forty property class?
Basically, the same as two ten, except it's a much larger parcel, the two forty.
And so what is a two ten?
A single-family residence, as well as...
Okay. Do you see, and if you look at the first, the second, and the third page of those assessor's documents, do you see any reference to any other property class other than two forty? Or any other use of the property?
Nope.
Okay. Can you go ahead to document fourteen, please? And are those, pardon me, two pages, a CO, and a building permit for twenty-three Applegate?
I don't see the, oh, yes. Yes, all three are here.
And the certificate of occupancy, which is the first page, can you tell the board what occupancy, up on the top of the first page of that exhibit, where it's checked as occupancy, what's filled in after that?
To occupy use as residence.
And then, down below, there's some typing centered up. Can you just read the first line of that? Starts with one family home.
One family home, three-car garage, front porch, deck, mudroom.
And then, if you go to the second page, which is the building permit, if you go to the first X, about three inches down on the left, says permission was given to construct what?
Single-family residence.
Okay. Can you tell us what that is?
This is an email where the link was shared with the rest of the department for us to, you know, observe it and take a look at it and see that we're talking about the same place.
Okay. Does it say there, here's a link?
Yeah, here's a link to the Airbnb at twenty-three Applegate.
Moving ahead to number sixteen.
First page.
Number sixteen is multiple pages. Looks like about sixteen pages. Can you take a look at the first page when you get there?
The very fir...
Right, the one with...
Without the picture.
No, the very first, which is captioned by Rhinebrook Estate, dash, eight-bed, eleven-bath,
I don't think I'm in the right spot. So, starting from that front, the one with the picture? Oh, yes. Buried in the clip. I could also tell you that I was there to put the zoning sign up for the public hearing, and I saw the sign, it's right at the end of the driveway.
Okay.
With the, with the address.
What I was wondering is, when you look at those pictures, in the middle on the top, there's one with a home that looks like two chimneys.
Yep.
Say where that house is.
It looks like the subject house. It's a little blurry, but it was much clearer when I looked at it on the computer screen.
Okay. Can you go to page two? No, pardon me.
The third one, right?
Page four, sorry. There's the picture page, and there's the this space page, and then there's residence offers, and then there's a page which, over on the left, says terms and conditions.
Okay.
In looking at that page, do you see a reference to the property being rented?
I don't see anything about renting. If there's more than sixteen guests, you gotta pay an extra hundred bucks a night.
Is there a reference to a security deposit?
Yes.
How much?
Twenty-five hundred.
Okay, and then two lines down, is there a reference to a rental period there?
Yes, the security deposit will be collected at the time of signing this contract and will be returned within seven business days after the rental period ends, as long as there's no damage.
Did you look at this document before you came tonight?
Yeah, well, yeah, my copy.
Okay. Did you see any reference in that document, the sixteen pages, to indicate that breakfast was served at this property?
No.
Are you familiar with a woman by the name of Jean Kelly?
Yes.
How do you know Jean Kelly?
She came into the office a couple of months ago, identified herself as the property manager for the property. She also made reference that the three owners don't live there. And there was one other thing.
Did you have any conversation with her about rental?
Oh, yeah, she, she said it was a short-term rental, STR or whatever, however she abbreviated
Have you looked through town records for applications and permits that relate to this property?
Can you repeat the question, please?
Have you looked through town records for reference to applications and/or permits that may have been issued for this property?
Yeah, pretty much the ones I think you showed me in this packet. And I did not go deep to other, I did, actually. I don't think there was anything else.
Any application for a lodging facility?
No.
Any application for B and B? Now, Mr. Close mentioned this Pleasant Valley Airbnb list.
Mm-hmm.
Which is attached to that packet there as number seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell the board what it is and why it was...
That list was basically, just at its early, early stages. We started doing our own research online, just the way you would find the paperwork for twenty-three. And I think it was probably somewhere around a dozen came up, but we did not go any further yet because we just, we just discovered this. But we have a lot of research to do, we're gonna have to see how they're actually operating and if it's actually true. And it's just, it's in its early, early stages right now.
Can you tell the board when that list was prepared?
Mr. Lambert prepared it, I think, maybe one of the young ladies helped him. But it's probably within two to three weeks, maybe a little bit longer. The list of Airbnbs that we haven't gotten into yet. What's that?
What about?
How old is it?
Oh, it was created on May first.
May first.
Are you familiar, there's reference, I think, in Mr. Lambert's cease and desist to complaints. Are you personally familiar with any complaints about the use and occupancy of Applegate, twenty-three Applegate?
Yes.
Tell the board what you know about complaints.
Just basically a lot of nuisance, traffic, people not knowing how to get to where they need to get to, and they're going into neighbors' driveways. I heard one about a beer truck coming up there to deliver. I don't remember who said that to me.
How many different people registered complaints?
Do we have a number? Just...
Pardon me?
Just one that I know of.
Okay. When you look through the file for this property? And the notices that have gone out? Have you had a chance to look at the addresses used for the owners?
The only one was New York City, but I know there's one in Florida.
Are there any addresses in the file on this property? Within the last two or three years? With a mailing address in either Hyde Park or Pleasant Valley?
No, not that I know of.
Now, Mr. Close made reference to a document called BLAT sixty. Get close to the end here, I promise. BLAT number sixty.
This is a typical municipal search.
Does it show any violations?
No.
Does it have any reference to a B and B?
No.
Lodging facility?
Nope.
And what's the date of that?
November twenty-one.
What year?
Twenty-twenty-one. Sorry, November first, twenty-twenty-one.
If the current owners purchased that property in twenty-twenty-two? Am I correct in assuming that that search was done before they purchased the property? If that's dated twenty-twenty-one, and if the testimony was that the property was purchased in twenty-twenty-two? Would that be a search which preceded a closing of purchase?
Oh, can I clarify something that I heard earlier? Is that, was that a bad idea? No, I just wanted to... They did the definition of the lodging facility. There was a little back and forth about single-family residence. Yes, the house was built as a single-family residence, and was built pursuant to not only the Town of Pleasant Valley building codes, but also the New York State building codes, whether residential or whatnot. So, how it's being used has nothing to do with how it was built and what it was intended to be. So, I just wanted to clarify, and it does... In the lodging definition, it mentions transient. We may not have a definition for transient in the Town of Pleasant Valley code, but there is a definition in the New York State residential code, or building code, I'm sorry. So, it's in there. Transient is thirty... Either thirty or less days, or less than thirty days. And if we're doing overnights, or a week, or three days, it's definitely falling into the definition of a lodging facility. Because that's the only thing we have that fits it. And however you cut it up, it's a violation, so.
Can I just ask you one question?
Is that, is that... Is that allowed?
I didn't cross-examine your client, but, dear, Mr. Close. And I don't think the cross-examination was appropriate. I'll defer to counsel, to the zoning board.
I think that's a decision for the board.
He already sat back down. All right, is there anyone who has a question for Mr. Nelson? Or Mr. Fuma? Is there anyone else who'd like to talk about this application?
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Richard Olson, the law firm McCabe and Mack. I'm here for the adjoining property owners David Hardisty and Kelly Rettel Hardisty. I thank Mr. Nelson for eliminating the first two, three, or four pages of what I was going to talk about tonight. And I will tell you that I agree with Mr. Close that this board is charged with the duty of essentially determining whether or not the operations, the use of the property of this structure meets, is a single-family use. We've heard a lot about the rentals that go on, they've admitted to this fact. My client had submitted to this board, just so you, it's in the record, a narrative of items that they found on the public record, on the Internet, on the fact that there is a subdivision restriction, deed restriction about commercial uses. All those are in the document that's been provided to you. While looking through that document, I found a reference to Zen Den Escapes, which is a website, and I'm going to give you this exhibit that I prepared. Which basically contains A through F, and the ones that I would draw your attention to, because it goes to the use of the property, is exhibit C, which shows it, it's a booking site that the Rhinebeck, not Rhinebeck, Rhinebrook Estates has a booking reference on this zen-den.com. That I went further, and if you look at the document C, you'll see that there's a listing of dates that have already been booked. As I count them, there's twenty-six dates between the month of June and July that are already booked. I decided to see if the website worked, so in exhibit D, I clicked in July nineteenth and twenty-one, which were open. And fortunately, neither my credit rating nor my wife would allow me to book for those three days, if R and C is what I am able to pay for. The rest of the document goes on with the terms and conditions that are set forth in order to rent the property, and the management brochure of the Zen Den Escapes. The other item that I would put before the board this evening is I did a small memorandum of law. The appellate division for both the Third Department and the Second Department have concluded that, and this is just paraphrasing, renting out the residence on a short-term basis is not using the residence as a one-family dwelling. So I think it's up to this board to determine, based on what you've heard this evening, as to whether or not this meets the criteria of a single-family residence, which is the only allowable use in your rural agricultural zone, other than the bed and breakfast, and we've gone through and understand that they would have to make an application for a special permit if they met the criteria. The other exhibit that I will give you is... It's an email exchange between my client, Kelly Rettel Hardisty, and apparently a representative of the property dating back to July of twenty-twenty-two, when she first complained about someone coming to the property, to her house, to find out where the location of the bed and breakfast, Airbnb, whatever you want to call it, the rental property was. The response from that representative, who was identified as Joshua, was basically the fact that they would make sure that the sign was relocated onto their property. Just simply to indicate, again, the use of the property. I will leave this with you. I think that you've heard more this evening than you need to at this point.
Did everyone get one?
Did Steve get one?
Oh, we need one more.
One more one.
Not that one. Yeah, that one. Ms. Hardisty, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
You heard all the references before about perjury, so?
Yes, I understand. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to finally have a say about this obnoxious use that's been going on next to me for so many years. My first conversation with the owners of the property were, right after they purchased the property, we have a shared road, I don't know if this has been clear to you or not, but this is a private road with private access. There's only three of us that take care of it. It's supposed to be specific to our private residence, us, that's it. It was very clear in the deed restrictions that apparently they didn't read or refused to understand that this is exactly what it's supposed to be used for, no commercial anything, unless you're hanging a license out to practice maybe law or something. But if it was a lot of wear and tear or noise on the road, you weren't allowed to do it. It was supposed to be a very quiet use. John Alderberg was very careful about the way he wrote these deed restrictions. He interviewed all of us, and he was really, really worried about how it would be taken care of in the future. But after I spoke to Josh, when we had this conversation about how we handled the private road, and I was managing it, and how we went forward every year with collecting checks and distributing it, and how the Arnos and I shopped the property, shopped all the vendors for the property. He absolutely, in no uncertain turns, promised me that this would be nothing like the previous owners, because I had explained to them that there had been a cease and desist served to the previous owner about that Airbnb that she was conducting there illegally. Well, it didn't take him long after that, he remodeled the entire place. I was getting deliveries at my house, I was calling him, trucks are coming in. So on July the fourteenth, I sent Josh an email, it said, "Good afternoon, Josh. I've just had a couple ringing my doorbell at my home to find your address, twenty-three Applegate Lane", as he explained he had rented it for four days. Frankly, this is a situation we have with the last owner, and ended serving her with a cease and desist. Renting is prohibited according to the deed restrictions as well as the town ordinance. Please explain. This is exactly the disturbing behavior I had to deal with in the past. It was horrible and unnerving, and I refuse to deal with it again. I do not want to engage in any more of these intrusions on my private property, and will take any and all necessary steps to protect my home, privacy, and quality of life that the deed restrictions and the town codes protect me from. Later that day, I got a response from Josh. "Kelly", in exclamation points, "I am so sorry about that. Apologies for the elderly couple at the wrong house. I can totally understand and imagine how this might have brought up memories of situations from the past. We, however, are not that woman in any shape or form, I promise. I assure you're not gonna have any more issues like this from us. I am taking multiple precautions, and will create new signage with our property line, on our property line, and will do this just in case. I look forward to meeting you and the rest of that baloney." I answered him again, I said, "Look, and I'm sorry, are you renting or not? I am adamantly against any commercial use in our private neighborhood. Maybe you misunderstood my point." The last thing I got from him is, "No, we are not using this for a commercial use." That was the end of Josh, never heard from him again. Next, we had to have our attorney from McCabe and Mack send a registered letter to, I think it was Larry Zabar, and two other folks, two of your father, brother-in-law, I don't know who they are, two other Lanzman, not, no one was David, no one was Joshua, but this went to their facility, their property. I think it's in Boston, Massachusetts, someplace. Never heard a response from these folks. I can't tell you folks enough just how obnoxious this is. I have people driving around my house at ten-thirty at night. I don't know if you've ever experienced somebody driving up your driveway that you're not expecting at ten-thirty at night, but just once is enough to send you reeling. You know that this is not a good situation, someone's hurt, or someone's trying to hurt you. It's just bad. I've gone into my home before where I'm driving up the driveway, coming home from shopping, see a car coming at me, you cannot get around each other, this is literally a driveway. I turned it back up, they're not waiting for me, they drive right over my yard. As recently as a couple of weeks ago, I'm leaving my house, and I have a gang of fifteen, eighteen people just congregated at the end of my driveway. This is clearly not a use that should be allowed anyplace in the Town of Pleasant Valley. When you have twenty people allowed to sleep in this house, you know more than that's happening. One of the worst experiences we had was the first Christmas that he had owned this house. It was a three-ring circus, it started with somebody trying to deliver my house flowers, fine, they're having a little fun. They were going to twenty-three Applegate Lane. From that moment on, there were cars coming and going constantly. It went on the entire holiday week, it was just horrible. And I know nobody wants to hear about the tour buses that come in, but we do have the Hudson Valley Tour Buses that come in and out of our private drive. They can't fit in unless you back out of the entryway. This is just a horrible way to live. And they have absolutely no regard for our quality of life. Apparently, when they read the deed restrictions, they had no, they had no interest in being neighbors. Because if they were neighbors, they wouldn't be acting like this. I would ask you, also, there has been another complaint, which you have in your packet that we distributed earlier. It's exhibit F. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I have the one right one. Chucking up my fingers on... She actually lives across the street, and these are the people that found the lovely TikTok video of the bachelorette party going on, called me mortified. I'm writing this letter for the record, as you consider the use and situation of the Airbnb on Applegate Lane in Hyde Park. The house is being used as a hotel with dozens of people renting there each weekend, bringing in party buses, drunk people roaming the neighborhood, and general lack of respect for the people who live nearby. It is not only rude, it is not befitting the neighborhood, nor do I believe it is legal or it is zoned for hotel. Further, the owners who rent the property post videos, and Instagram, and TikToks that make the location known. Similarly, people who stay there do the same. For example, Sister Snacking has four-hundred-and-seventy thousand followers on Instagram, stayed at the property and posted a video. There's no address other than Hyde Park, but I knew instantly where it was, so did others. This creates security and safety risks. I know my neighbors have also called the police due to disturbances. Please kindly limit the property to a single-family use. I could stand here for hours and tell you the crap that I've dealt with in the past few years, not just from him, but from the prior owners. But this is the type of stuff that just can't happen. As recently, if you look at your exhibit H, this is me going nuts in my front yard, this is Monday night. My husband and I are sitting outside after dinner, trying to enjoy a cup of iced tea. And here, this woman, again, I knew exactly what was happening. And she's slowly coming up, and I'm going, "Okay, what do you want?" "I'm looking for twenty-three Applegate Lane, the Airbnb, do you know where they are?" Well, I don't know why she didn't see the six-foot sign that's standing there in front of the driveway that says Hyde with the uplight on it, but apparently she didn't. That was not the first incident that happened that day. Earlier that day, when my husband was coming in at four-thirty in the afternoon, there was a woman in a red衣衫 at the end of the other end of our driveway, because we have a cir- there was a woman in a rent-a-rack at the end of the other end of our driveway, because we have a circular driveway, a horseshoe driveway, just standing there, wandering around her phone, around the car, with a phone in her hand, looking like she was totally lost. The, the bottom line is, if you don't know where you're going, you don't live there, you don't belong on the road, unless you're a guest, and somebody's expecting that you're coming. This is, I just can't explain, I, my, my life is a constant sense of insecurity. I never know who I'm approaching, if I should approach them or not. I'm just hoping that at some point, somebody doesn't just stop and hurt me, or a member of my family. My grandchildren are not allowed off the top of the driveway anymore, because I never know who's coming and going up and down that driveway, if they're going to get grabbed. There's no sight distance, so if you're driving that driveway, you have nowhere to dare where you're going, especially when you're coming up the hill, so you can't see anybody coming or going. So I'm respectfully asking you folks to please try to do something to make this right. It's just been a terrible thing, I'm sorry it's gone on this long. Um, like most people, you get distracted with other things going on in your life, I should have made many more complaints, much longer. But it's here, it's, it's done now, and I'm, I'm hoping you can help me with this, and thank you for listening to me.
Could you show, or show us here which parcel is yours?
On the postal station at the end of the bottom of the hill. This is where everybody wants to come and ask questions.
Okay, here, okay.
Has, uh, has anybody called for any police requirements to come in?
I have not. You know, at the end of the day, they're quick, they're coming, they're going, I, I, I know that he, he's saying that he lives there. I, I live there, and I see everybody coming and going, I've never seen this man before in my life. I've never seen him at a mailbox. I, and I, to answer your question, no, I don't know what to do. I know what's going on. I guess unless they're threatening my health, but even when I went out the other day, and there's this group of people, I had a decision to make. Do you just try to keep going? Do you try to back down your driveway and get in, and try to lock the door behind you, get, you just don't know what to do. And it happens, it's quickly, and it happens like surprising. And this group finally was moving off the property and going out towards the road. I don't know what they were doing, maybe they were going on a hike. Regardless, they don't belong there, under any circumstances.
Okay, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? State your name, sir.
David Hardisty. I'm Kelly's husband.
Okay, Mr. Hardisty, do you swear, wait, 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 one moment. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Okay.
Do you recognize him? He'd been a single-family resident, as he claims, for two years or more, doing his due diligence, as you said, was documented before he even moved in. I've never seen him, I don't know who he is. This, every person has to go by our driveway. We see lots of their customers over, all the time. I got a Mexican helper who says, "What's happened here? These guys are here all the time, coming up and down your road. There never was like this before." It's changed the character of this from a single-family resident, it's not. And it, to me, it walks like a duck, it talks like a duck, it's a duck. They're lodging there, they're spending the night, they're spending money, he's paying taxes, he's in an LLC, which means his insurance needs to be a special insurance that's covered under LLCs. And I don't know how many more definitions, unless you bring an IRS agent in here, that would describe this as a business. And that's all. And I don't recognize this gentleman, or his two other partners.
Anyone else? No? Okay, at this time, we could close the public hearing, and we'll deliberate. You, you're all welcome to state, but you can't, um, make any comments.
Ms. Chair, would you mind if I made just a procedural comment?
Sure.
Um, so, uh, the code provides for, uh, the collection of escrow for consultants, as you know.
Yes.
And it's my understanding that, uh, you as the chair had notified Mr. Nelson earlier in the process that you would need legal assistance.
Yes.
Um, so, the code does say the ZBA should make that decision, in one place, it's sort of, there's two different statements. Anyway, I, I think it would be, uh, helpful if the ZBA were to ratify that decision, so that we have it on the record that the ZBA is requesting that consultant service.
Okay, um, does anybody have any comments about that? I did, in fact, ask for, um, legal counsel for tonight. Sometimes we just have a plain old fence, and, you know, we don't need them to come out. Okay, then, we'll take a vote, uh, entertain a motion to ask for legal counsel for this application.
A second.
A second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Everyone, okay.
And then the other matter was the, um, the issue that I had raised to you earlier, do you, the, um, the referral, do you want to discuss that?
Yeah, I wrote that down somewhere. Oh, wait, you said.
Would you like me to, or I, I didn't want to speak out of turn?
Yeah, because I know, I think this is it.
So, the code, um, says that all applications to the ZBA, including appeals, are to be referred to the planning board. And, um, I think that in the interest of being cautious and making sure we don't have any procedural, um, irregularities, it would be wise to make that referral, even, we didn't do it before the hearing, but we could still do it now and give the planning board a chance, um, to provide any, uh, input that it has.
So, again, I would, um, take a motion to send this application to the planning board and ask for their opinion.
Aye.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
So, would you like to keep the hearing open, or close it at this time?
Um, I would like to keep it open, now that you mention it. Um, I, I personally feel like all of this info that I could hardly pick up, that we've received tonight, if you really want me to go through it and review it, I'm not going to do it in the next ten, fifteen minutes. I would like to adjourn this until July, I think it's, let's see when the July meeting, huh?
Not June?
This is June.
It is.
Um, July, I wrote it down. Too much paperwork, I'll tell you that. Anyway, the regular meeting date in July.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, thank you. At seven PM. Um, does that, does everyone agree with that, and do you have a comment on that? I know, I can go through all this.
Excuse me. The regular, uh, ZBA meeting is actually scheduled for the end of this month.
The, the twenty-second, I think.
This was a special meeting, I believe, yes, I mean, we don't want to do it at that meeting.
Um, the attorneys are not available on the twenty-second, correct?
Twenty-six.
Oh, twenty-six. They're not available, okay.
Well, also, the, the planning board referral might take longer than.
Oh, that's another thing, they need thirty days, right? Okay, in that case, um, I would take a motion to adjourn this application until July twenty-fourth.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Let's do a roll call.
Is that pending, response from, uh, planning board?
Yes. Yes, we should, yes. All right, let's do a roll call. Robert?
Uh, in favor?
Patty? Mary?
In favor.
In favor.
Kathy?
Agree.
And Steve? And I'm a yes. Okay. Thank you all for coming. You don't look like you're in a big hurry to go. What? I don't.
Minutes.
You have to do minutes, yeah.
I didn't look at any minute. No.
They're, we got, they're in here in this Nassau.
Did you look at him? Did you look at him?
No, I did not, I'm a draft.
Are we done? Oh, we're going to submit. Not yet. Oh, I forgot to say that, anyone could write comments. The, has anyone looked at the minutes?
I'm looking at them now.
Mary's checking them right now. I think.
Dictionary's word, yes.
I know. I'm going to need a truck to get all this home. Oh, here's, here's your message. They were on the bottom, sorry. Oh, she has a question about him now. Yeah, you want to postpone until next, next month?
Yep.
I didn't look at him, did you look at him?
I did, but it was so long ago.
Well, I was actually absent.
All right, I would make a motion that we postpone the approval of the minutes until the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.